Call to order the January 11th meeting of the Cary Town Council. Happy New Year, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Soon as I find the right slides, there we go. Without finding it, I know the first order of business, and that's to adopt the agenda. And I would entertain a motion to do so.
Second, you want us to do it slowly?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I've now caught up. Yay. We now move to the second item on our agenda. It's recognition, reports, and presentations, and we have a report from our town manager, Mr. Stiegel.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, CSX Transportation will implement rolling closures of seven railroad crossings in Cary starting at 9:00 PM on Monday, January 15th through the evening of January 19th. CSX crews will begin work near North Academy Street, near East Cedar Street, moving four miles west toward Apex and ending at Laura Duncan Road. All this will be on the website, by the way. The continuous closures are necessary to allow CSX to complete railroad maintenance work overnight and asphalt repairs during the day. Specific railroad closures and local detour information is available on our website. Additionally, all detours and construction updates will be pushed to the Waze app available on your smartphone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. We, I'm sorry.
Yay.
Oh, we now move to our next item on the agenda, which is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that works to your benefit because you get more time to speak at a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. And there is a timer located on the podium, and initially, there will be a green light. When you have 30 seconds remaining, that green light turns into a yellow light, and when that 30 seconds expires, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light, and that's when I will interrupt you, again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair, interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. There's a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out, and that's why it's important that we have this following of the time. Public Speaks Out speakers, if you're here on behalf of a group or with a group, I would ask that you have a speaker to speak on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments. And if you would like to speak next, I would ask that you get in line next to the steps over there. That way, we could be more efficient and have more people talk, and it also signals me that there are speakers ready to speak. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud or make remarks from your seats or anything else that may distract from the meeting. Okay, so now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Thomas Mulligan. I live in the Weldon Ridge area. I'm here tonight to provide additional comments on the rezoning request 17-REZ-13, which references traffic study 17-TAR-421. A number of residents commented at your meeting, as did representatives of the developer, on December 14th, 2017. Comments at the December 14th meeting, including one of regret about the misguided State of North Carolina new ruling effective in August 2017 that severely curtails road and traffic management costs that the developer may incur with their new development. Prior to such ruling, such as the proposal, developers of the proposal had a responsibility that extended as far as five miles for the costs of such road improvements and management. I expect some of the council has seen the recent YouTube video of cars queuing on 55, on Highway 55, for public schools. There is also news reports. Many residents, many resident issues related to traffic, parking, and queuing at or around the proposed school. The proposed school is planned to have over 2,000 students. It's for K through 12, yet the acreage footprint for this property is a small fraction of that required by the county for any public schools. The council moved the rezoning request to the Planning and Zoning Board. They are scheduled to discuss the proposal at the regular meeting of February 26th. As you know, residents can attend, but cannot speak at that meeting. Whatever comes out of the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and whatever following action the developer of the property takes, the actual traffic and parking will be different from plan. While the NCDOT in the city must approve the transportation plan to the developer, I believe the key factor we are talking about here is public safety. That is the responsibility of the Cary Police Department. The parking and traffic at and by the proposed new school will vary over time and may not be per the official development plan. I believe the council should add another condition to any approval of this project. The condition should include that the Cary City Police Department, in its sole discretion, will determine when, where, and how many, and for what period of time, traffic control officers are necessary to protect the public. The police department will provide such public service, and the developer, its subsidiaries, successors, and assignees will be obligated to pay the city for such services at an hourly rate per officer-
Sorry, I have to interrupt you?
-as determined by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Donna Clark, and I live at 111 Urban Drive, and I am speaking to Agenda Item 6.3, where there has been a request for rezoning. I don't remember exactly when it was. We came to a meeting where the zoning board basically defeated the request, said they did not approve the request. Of course, it comes before you all tonight, and you will yea or nay. I live across the street from that particular piece of property, and already, there is going to be development there on Chatham, at the Chatham Walk, and that, the property at 110 Urban, not sure what's going to happen there. If something is approved tonight, there probably will be townhomes, things like that. Where I'm located, right beside me, which is 400 East Chatham, is a property that has been sold and will be developed. I'm not sure what it will be developed into. So, basically, I'm going to have development beside me and across the street from me into various places. It's been hard for me to accept that this is a possibility that's going to happen because I've lived there since 1987, and it's, it's just my retirement home, and that's where I want to stay. But I know that progress is inevitable, and I can have a very good attitude about that. Whatever happens, I will be okay. I do ask this, that you keep in mind, that being that there's going to be development to my right, across the street to me, possibly in two different places, that somehow, some way, I can be cared for with my privacy, be it, you know, berm, be it, I don't need a wall, whatever, whatever is appropriate. I would really appreciate that, and appreciate the process. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak, and your willingness to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Erin Nortonan, and I'm here to say thank you, and for also the opportunity to tell you about grassroots movement that I am a part of to make Cary a declared dementia-capable The Dementia Capable Action Team is a group of local senior advocates, caregivers, and businesses that recognize the various and serious impact that dementia has on our area of North Carolina. We are committed to educate and engage our region in a grassroots effort to create a more dementia-capable community. Don't need to tell you that Cary is home to an increasing number of elders, and data tells us that every one of us will encounter dementia. It may be a stranger, it may be a neighbor, a fellow church member, or a customer. Many of us, maybe many of you, wouldn't know how to approach an elder who seems lost or unsure of how to negotiate a simple purchase or a simple bank transaction. Becoming a designated dementia-capable community will shape an informed environment that includes businesses, healthcare, faith, and civic organizations. That then becomes a safety net to support those who have dementia and those who care for the people who have dementia. Town of Cary is already an area leader in providing senior services. Cary Go Transportation, we have an award-winning senior center, we have a caring and involved police force, and we have an interested and engaged council. We thank you, Town of Cary employees and elected members, for their generous support and response already provided to our dementia-capable movement. The police department, specifically Brian Smith, Tracy Jernigan, Jeffrey Hammerstein, see firsthand the need for a dementia-capable community, and our active participants in our movement. The senior center staff, Stephanie Nichols and Jody Jamison, have provided time and talent and the use of space at the senior center for our January 30th summit. As Cary residents and leaders in this grassroots movement, we are most grateful for the compassionate support the town has provided and continues to provide its senior population. We extend an invitation and sincerely hope you can join us at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, January 30th.
Sorry, I'm going to have to stop you right now.
Thank you.
If you have additional comments you'd like for us to see, leave them with me.
I have some information.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for speaking. Next speaker.
My name is Barry Alexander. I'm with the HOA of the Regency Renaissance Cottage, is it Regency Homeowners Association?
If I could get you to wait a little bit till we get to public hearings, you'll have five minutes instead of three. We have a public hearing on that?
Okay, very good.
And I'll call on you first. What was your last name?
Alexander.
Alexander.
Thank you.
Very good. I'll call on you first. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Yes?
I'm here to discuss or present about 17REZO5, the White Oak Community. My name's Sherry Courtney. I'm here representing five families, 15 families, that live off Ridgeback Road and Rolling Knoll roads. This week, I sent an email to the Town Council, which discussed how the applicant's request for the PDD rezoning does not comply with the LDO or Cary plans. Also included were the current development maps for Cary and Apex, which detail how the Green Level Special Planning Area is quickly becoming overdeveloped. This PDD proposal is for a much higher density than what is allowed in the Green Level Special Planning Area. Staff has informed us that density allowances are for the entire area, however, nowhere else in Cary is this true. Density allowances are to be evaluated for specific development, not for the entire area. Traffic is a serious concern. We have experienced significant increases in traffic with the addition of White Oak Elementary School. Adding apartments, townhomes, daycare, or resource center, and over seven newly approved neighborhoods next to an existing church without road improvements or traffic lights is too much for our current roads and the small traffic circle to handle. We have children walking to school, cars pulling out into multiple blind intersections where traffic is going 50 miles per hour, bicyclists that ride our backroads, races and marathons several times a year, citizens that use the American Tobacco Trail. It's just too much. We do not have the infrastructure to support additional high-density housing. Looking at future plans for the Green Level area, you will note the closest plans for any transportation or infrastructure, meaning bus routes, go-Cary, grocery stores, medical facilities, pharmacy, restaurants, employment opportunities, et cetera, is in the Destination Center, which is slated in the far future to be by 540, which is miles away. We are destroying the look and feel of Green Level in the Special Planning Area. The Cary plan was supposed to be flexible, however, the main principle was to ensure proper transition between uses. There is not a proper transition here. Nowhere else in Cary would be, would allow apartments to be considered as an appropriate transition to large single-family homes. I understand the social pressure here. We only have a handful of neighbors that actually live off of Ridgeback and Rolling Knoll right now. Within the next year, we're going to have two new neighborhoods off of our road that it's already in the process of being built. The LDO and the Cary plans are put into place so that we ensure proper uses as our community flourishes. We are asking you to please reject 17REZO5 until the applicant creates a more appropriate solution for this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close Public Speaks Out, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all Consent Agenda items. On the Consent Agenda, we have minutes. Appointment to vacancies to Advisory Board's Public Art Advisory Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment, and clarification on Mayor's appointment to Friends of the Page Walker Board. Ratification of resolution, 11,000 Regency Parkway and 323 West Chatham Street. Funding consideration to acquire property for future Cary Apex water treatment facility expansion. 17REZ22 Maple Springs Drive rezoning. 17AO9 Marcia A. Coleman annexation. Walker Street Extension Project withdrawal of funds and project closure. Council members like any of these items pulled for discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second? There's a motion and a second? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. We're now at public hearings. Same rules that applied for Public Speaks Out apply for public hearings with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. Our first public hearing is 17REZ29 Twin Lakes PDD Amendment. Katie Dry of our staff will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight. Instead, it's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation, and will return to us at a future date. Is it dry?
Good evening, Council. This is a request to amend the existing Twin Lakes Plan Development District at 3624 Davis Drive. The property is located on the eastern side of Davis Drive. It's between the intersections of Airport Boulevard to the north and Lake Grove Boulevard to the south. The subject site is actually just a portion of a larger site. The subject site is highlighted here in yellow. The larger site actually extends down to Lake Grove Boulevard. The property is part of the Twin Lakes Plan Development District. It's undeveloped, with the exception of a cell tower, which is located on the southeastern portion of the site. The site to the north will be developed into a shopping center called the Twin Lakes Center, which is the location of the future Wegmans. This area of Cary is next to and adjacent to Morrisville in many locations. There is an adjacent single-family dwelling that is bordered on three sides of this particular site. This single-family dwelling is within Morrisville, also properties to the south and across the street, but even to the north is part of Cary. In fact, there's a rezoning that's going on at this time at the intersection of Airport Boulevard and Davis Drive. This is the current zoning for the property. The site is zoned PDD major. The property is in purple on this map, is zoned Plan Development District, or PDD. The property is in white, are part of the Morrisville jurisdiction, so you can see how the boundaries for the two jurisdictions kind of interact in this area. Twin Lakes is a PDD. It's more than 200 acres. There are five remaining undeveloped parcels as part of this PDD. These undeveloped parcels are designated as mixed-use parcels, or MU parcels. There's a total of five. These parcels share allowances for retail, office, restaurant, multifamily, and assisted living. This subject site, which is going to be called MU3 North, is part of the MU3 parcel, which is located along Davis Drive here. What the applicant's proposing to do is carve off a portion of MU3. It would be designated as MU3 North, and they're proposing to only allow 200 multifamily, age-restricted units on this parcel, so it would not have allowances to these other shared uses that the other locations have. The remaining MU parcels would still have full allowance uses and square footages of the maximum, maximum remaining uses from this table. So with this rezoning, the applicant's proposing the following revisions be associated with the site. First, to limit the use to a maximum of 200 multifamily dwellings. They're proposing an age restriction associated with these, where 80% of the dwellings would have at least one person age 55 or older. They're proposing to increase the community gathering space to 2,000 square feet. This is 800 square feet above what would be required for a parcel of this size by the land development ordinance. They're proposing a parking ratio of 1.3 spaces per unit, and the applicant has submitted a justification for this parking reduction, which is included as an attachment to the staff report. And in their justification, the applicant indicated that parking ratios for their projects across the country generally average at 1.28 spaces per unit. They're also proposing to remove the buffer between the site and the adjacent residential parcel, and disturbance to the perimeter buffers, and I'll talk a little bit more about these last two revisions. So, this is, this map here shows the buffer map for the Twin Lakes Plan Development District. As you can see, there is a 20-foot Type B perimeter buffer down Davis Drive, and along this single-family home, which is shown here in this aerial, there is a 25-foot Type A buffer, according to the, to the map. What the applicant's proposing to do is to remove this buffer if the site is developed in conjunction with the larger site. Now, this site is located in the town of Morrisville, so staff notes if it were developed with the larger site, there would be a joint plan review that would be reviewed by the Town of Cary as well as Morrisville at the same time, and the development could, could occur across the jurisdictional boundaries. Regarding the perimeter buffers and streetscapes, the applicant's proposing to remove the existing vegetation and replace it with the installation of a planted streetscape. They have submitted a tree survey of the site, which is attached to the staff report, and they noted in their justification that the survey revealed no significant trees or upper-story specimen trees. They've also noted the streetscape would need to be too disturbed to accommodate the burial power lines, and in this picture, you can see here, much of the area that would be within the streetscape has already been cleared. Staff has evaluated the case with the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The first, we look at the site's designation in the town's Future Growth Framework map, which is part of the plan. This site is designated as a commercial center, and according to the plan, commercial centers are defined as shopping centers of five to 10 acres or more, that would be anchored by a supermarket or equivalent. Further, it states that commercial centers may also have residential office or institutional uses incorporated within those centers, and they may be either vertically or horizontally We also look at the live chapter of the plan. The staff has made the following observations. First, the rezoning seeks to add multifamily housing choices for seniors, and we know within the next few decades, there will likely be an increasing demand for this type of housing type. The site's also in close proximity to multiple shopping centers, as shown on this map. There is not, however, current access to transit at this location. However, Imagine Cary does have a long-term goal of providing go-Cary service routes along Davis Drive. When looking at the work chapter, staff evaluated the case under Policies 1 and 2 with respect to housing for workplaces, and Policy 2 and 8 with respect to employment locations. Located along Davis Drive is a prime location. It's within a couple miles of RTP, as shown on this map. It'd be an ideal location for younger households who are actively employed and are near RTP, especially with the nearby mix of shopping, dining, services, parks, and greenways. When looking at Policies 2 and 8 of the work chapter, staff notes that MU3, as it exists today, is a total of 14 acres. It's probably not viable for a major corporate campus. The site may be viable, however, for mixed-use office buildings, neighborhood office, mid-to-small floor-mat office buildings, and such building space may provide locations for smaller firms servicing RTP corporations or spillover startup firms. When looking at the Town of Cary GIS maps, it shows that the site could be impacted by stream buffers associated with the ponds to the east. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, it identifies a greenway corridor adjacent to the site to the east. The greenway corridor extends around the existing ponds. According to the transportation plan, Davis Drive is a major thoroughfare, and Lake Grove Boulevard is a collector road. There was a neighborhood meeting held for the site on November 1st here at the Town Hall, and some of the questions and discussion at the neighborhood meeting were regarding the proposed use and the density. There were questions regarding the potential building height for the site, the future greenway, which would be adjacent to the site as well. So in preparation for the public hearing, the site has been posted and ads placed on the town's website, and the mailings were sent to properties within 800 feet of the site. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the public hearing, staff will be available for questions, and the applicant is here to share comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jamie Schwader with Parker Poe, 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the developer, Gray Star. Robert Morgan with Gray Star is also here with me tonight, and will say a few words during the public hearing. Thanks to Mr. Dry for that thorough presentation. I only have a few highlights to add to highlight what conformities we see with the Cary Community Plan, explain why this change is something that we believe is good for Cary and consistent with its policies. As Mr. Dry explained, this is one of five parcels that has been designated as a mixed-use parcel in a 2003 PDD, and what we're trying to do is amend that PDD for one portion of one of the parcels to change some of the permitted uses on the site and remove those and replace it with just a 200-unit, age-restricted, multifamily- just a 200-unit age-restricted multifamily product. What that means is right now, this site, along with the other remaining MU parcels, can be mixed with a variety of office or retail, restaurant uses, and we are limiting only to that age-restricted multifamily use. This is really resulting in a drastic reduction of impact and traffic that would otherwise result on that site if the mixture of uses planned in existence would be allowed. And why are we seeking this change? Well, since the PDD was adopted in 2003, we've seen a drastic change in the types of housing that seniors need. In 2003, assisted living facilities were prevalent and active adult communities were not. But in the past 15 years, these active adult communities and multifamily products have become more prevalent throughout the country where seniors want a place that they can age in place without leaving their church, without leaving their community, to have walkable amenities, but not have to keep up with a, you know, 3,000-square-foot home and yard and those types of things. And this product has emerged somewhere between that single-family use and assisted living use and is a nice fit here for this walkable community that's being created adjacent to the Wegmans Center that was approved by the council in July. The key conditions, as Ms. Troy highlighted, were, of course, the age restriction on the multifamily. In addition, after the questions were raised at the neighborhood community meeting about the height, the existing PDD allows institutional uses like assisted living to be 96 feet high. We have committed to a reduction down to 66 feet to limit the multifamily use by a reduction of 30 feet in height. We've also increased the community gathering space to a minimum of 2,000 square feet, and we think that'll be a nice interface with the Hatches Pond across the way. And to highlight just a few areas of the consistency with the Cary Community Plan, there are policies that Ms. Troy highlighted, both the live, work, and shop chapters that really makes this a home run. First, as the live chapter points out in Chapter Two, the policy of providing a product for aging seniors in Cary. I think through the community plan process, you learn that Cary has a very surprisingly high population of aging seniors, and we need a place to house them, and this provides the exact type of product that is available for that. And in fact, Policy Two expressly mentions multifamily as a type of product that is under consideration. Second, the location is ideal here because it is along a potential future transit route, and it's within a walkable community of Twin Lakes. In addition, all of the units will be elevator service, so they'll be accessible in terms of ADA, and some of them will be handicap accessible as well. In terms of work, this is an ideal place for office to be integrated in a mixed-use site that's consistent with the work policies, and we would note that we're not removing any other uses on the other MU parcels, so they could be dispersed throughout Parcels One, Three, Four, and Five. And finally, consistent with the Future Growth Framework map, this is a commercial center. Commercial centers do have an installed use of multifamily, so it's consistent on all three grounds. Just to briefly hit the two modifications, the parking reduction is supported by TAB 5.1D in your packet and is based on a survey of our product across the country and in other heavily car-dependent areas where we still saw a reduction in the need of parking from 2.25 down to 1.3. Those other congruent areas are Raleigh and the Charlotte area that are still fairly heavily car-dependent. And then the buffer disturbance, that is, both of those requests, the removal of the perimeter buffer and Davis Drive are really to be consistent with what the council has approved, the Wegmans Center to the north. As Ms. Troy mentioned, there's not many vegetation within that perimeter buffer, and then our intent is to develop the parcel in conjunction with the one in Morrisville to have a more unified approach, and in that case, we would need to remove the buffer around what is currently a single-family home but would be integrated into the plan. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Now's the time for public hearing, 17 REZ 29, the Twin Lakes PDD Amendment, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Morgan from GrayStar. Thank you for having us here this evening to discuss this application, and Ms. Schweder did an excellent job highlighting what we're intending to do here. We're working on this product type in over 30 jurisdictions nationally. Some of those that are in close proximity to Cary are Raleigh, Durham, Charlotte, Charleston, South Carolina, Greenville, South Carolina, and Richmond, Virginia. We're really excited because as was noted, it's a housing type between single-family and more intense active adult living and independent living facilities, and it really allows folks, which we're seeing in our portfolio, sweet spot of folks really 70 to 75, to continue to live independently on their own and have some services which would be more than conventional apartments but not as intense as other housing types geared toward seniors. As was noted, obviously, traffic counts are significantly different. Most of these folks are not working full-time, and they could take advantage, obviously, of their auto transit at alternative times in the day and not during rush hour. Furthermore, in this particular location that was highlighted and why we were attracted to it was the walkable nature and the capabilities of these folks to walk to Wegmans, walk to the Starbucks down the street, bike to those locations, which provide also another alternative transportation. So we're very excited to be here. This will be a company, we work nationally, this will be our first Cary project. We're really excited. We see positive growth, as was noted in this demographic sector, and think that this location would be an absolute phenomenal opportunity for us and to expand that housing choice for the citizens of Cary. So I'm here to address any questions or if there's any comments, and again, thank you for having us here this evening and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Oh, explanation or question? I'm not quite sure about this Morrisville parcel. Are they saying that it's like this condition that they remove the buffer if the Morrisville and it comes into it? Okay, that's what I thought I heard.
So if this goes through, my understanding, I'm taking your job away from you. If it goes through, my understanding, it will be zoned to do what they want to do, and in the meantime, if that Morrisville piece wants to come in, then they can, and then it can all develop at one time. They might be working on it. I don't know if they are or not.
Yeah, it could be one development plan that would cross the jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you, Ms. Troy, and they'll make a recommendation. We'll see it in the future. We now move to our second public hearing, 5.2. The rezoning is 17 REZ 26, Regency Park PDD Amendment, Track Seven West. Ms. Spearman will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but we will refer it to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and it will return to us at a future date. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone a portion of Track Seven of the Regency Park Plan Development District. The parcel is located at 12,040 Regency Parkway. The property is outlined in yellow here, it backs up to US One, and the frontage of the property is along Regency Parkway. To the south are the Renaissance cottages at Regency. The site is a portion of Track Seven of the Regency Park Plan Development District, and you can see the entirety of the PDD in this slide. The proposed rezoning would amend the PDD master plan to increase the amount of parking allowed on the western half of Track Seven, would increase it from the current standard of 3.33 spaces per thousand square feet of building area to 4.85 spaces per thousand square feet. The standard ratio of 3.3 spaces can be increased by up to 30% through action by the planning director, and that can be based on factors that include the employees per square foot, the trips generated by the use and the time of day that trips are generated. Any additional increase above that 30% requires action by town council, and that can occur either through rezoning, in this case, either by rezoning the property through amending the Plan Development District or by council action following a quasi-judicial hearing. And in this case, the applicant has requested that the property be rezoned as the vehicle for making that request. The site is developed with 120,000 square-foot office building and 432 parking places. As I mentioned, the planning director can increase up to 30%, and that would allow 66 additional spaces to be added to this site. An additional 84 spaces above that could be allowed if this rezoning request is approved, so that would enable a total of 150 potential new parking spaces on this site. There are some site constraints, as you can see. There's a 50-foot buffer adjacent to US One that's shown in green. There are also 100-foot stream buffers generally located along the adjacent property lines that you can see in the blue color, and any additional parking area would need to be at least five feet outside of these buffer areas and could potentially occur within the areas generally circled in red. Given the topography of the site and the dimensions of these areas, construction of additional parking in all of these areas may not be feasible, but we haven't received any information specifically as to how that is proposed. And here are just a few photographs showing these four areas where the parking could potentially be expanded into. There are two policies of the Cary Community Plan that are particularly relevant to this request. In the work chapter, additional parking could be supported to meet the locational needs of new and expanding firms. The shape chapter calls for appropriate transitions between land uses, and this could potentially be a negative factor in reviewing this case to the extent that parking areas expand closer to residential areas to reduce the existing separation. The property is designated as a business industrial park on the Growth Framework map of the Cary Community Plan. The existing office use is consistent with this designation, and no change to the existing land use is proposed. According to Cary's GIS maps, there are stream buffers impacting two of the boundaries of the site. Field determination of these features is made or is finalized at the time of development plan review. The site is near the Cocoa Booth Amphitheater with nearby access to a greenway and street-side Regency Parkway is designated as a collector road in the move chapter of the Cary Community Plan. The town's requirements for traffic studies are based on the land use and the amount of square footage that is allowed on a site, and since there are no changes proposed to either the land use or the amount of development that could occur, a traffic study was not There are no existing or proposed transit routes adjacent to the site or within the Regency Park area. And this shows properties that were notified of the public hearing, and the property was noticed, or the property was posted and the public hearing was noticed as required. At the neighborhood meeting on October 4th, there were questions and concerns related to the buffer adjacent to US One, traffic. There were questions regarding the need for additional parking and questions regarding impervious surface. After the neighborhood meeting, the applicant did revise the application to remove an initial request that would have, that also included reducing the buffer width adjacent to US One. With the initial application, the applicant did ask for a 20-foot buffer reduction, but that was withdrawn. And also, the initial parking increase that was requested was 5.8 or 5.5, and that has been reduced to 4.85 spaces per thousand square feet. This concludes staff's presentation. Following applicant's comments and the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. At this time, I'd invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Log Group here on behalf of the applicant in this case. Here with me tonight is Mr. Eric Forshee of Spectrum Properties. Spectrum is the owner of the site, and the applicant seeking the, essentially now, the parking increase that is before you all tonight. Before I get started, I've got two things that I want to distribute. One is an aerial photograph of the site that I pulled off of Google Earth today, and the photos that the staff took will help complement that. And the second is the site plan that was submitted for this parking to the town today, which I think will help some context, add some context associated with the proposal. So if I could.
When was the site plan submitted?
Today.
Today.
Yep, that went in today. As that goes around, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the purpose of this case at this point is to, and it's always been, to increase the parking. And the reason why is the site is currently parked at 3.3 spaces per thousand square feet. You all have seen a multitude of cases where Class A office is requesting increases in the amount of parking that they need in order to remain competitive in the marketplace. The fact of the matter is that how office space is being used by tenants of all types is changing, and it has changed, and the marketplace has shifted to where customers, tenants are making a more efficient use of the space that they occupy. I think MetLife is a great example of that. I think MetLife is ultimately parked in excess of 5.5 spaces per thousand square feet, which is where this case started. So I want to make clear that the market associated with how space is being used is driving the owner's need to ensure that this remains a competitive Class A office building. And make no mistake, this is a very attractive competitive Class A office building. It's in an office park. It's a recognized office park. Regency is incredibly successful. They own, Spectrum owns, other properties within Regency, and they want to maintain the success of this building, much like they're working on the sites that they are currently working on. As that plan has gone around, and I think I want to cycle to, Mary, I don't know how to best get to it, but there were, there was a photo showing potential parking areas that I think might be beneficial.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, perfect. I was almost there. Great. So staff appropriately identified that there's only a limited, only a limited number of places where parking could theoretically go on this site. And as you can see in the site plan that I've distributed to you, we have grayed out the areas where parking is being proposed. Now, I want to be clear, there are some, there are some places internal to the existing parking where some restriping is going to occur, so that's not, those aren't additions to what is already there. You can see on the, on the screen what the aerial depicts as the parking, but essentially, there are three areas that are proposed for additional parking. It is this area here, this area here, and this area here. And so as you can see on the, on what I've given you, there's essentially a, what I'll call a rectangular block that comes off of here in this capacity here, and adds additional parking in this location. There is a similar rectangle that comes off of this parking area. It's actually served in this area that comes off adjacent to this stream buffer. We can't impact the buffer, of course. That's a Noose River buffered stream, so there's 50 feet on our side that we cannot impact and is not being proposed, is being impacted. So that will be adjacent to that buffered area. And then lastly, there is a rectangular spot in this location here where additional parking is being shown. One of the things that's not evident from this slide that I want to share with you all is that in addition to a stream serving as this boundary, a stream serving as this boundary, and US One serving as this boundary, there's also a significant, and it's depicted on the site plan that's in front of you, a significant utility transmission line that is in this location right here. And so what that means is, as you all are well-versed in, there's no vertical improvements that can go within that transmission line. So that severely impairs not only the ability to put buildings in, but more importantly, in order to increase parking, it severely impairs the ability to do things like structure parking, which Spectrum is doing on the other site that they own at Regency. They just can't do it here because physically, they don't have the ability to do so. As was noted, the building size is, nothing's changing. The building is going to remain the same exact size that it is. It's, again, simply trying to add spaces to remain competitive in the marketplace. I've mentioned the site constraints. The, one thing I want to note, and I handed out the aerial because it's not, it wasn't real clear in the staff report, and again, I just pulled this off of Google Earth, there is a healthy vegetated buffer in the area, in this area here. This is, given the way that the stream kind of curls around, one of the benefits of this particular site constraint is that Mother Nature has created a natural one of the benefits of this particular site constraint is that Mother Nature has created a natural buffer between these two, between these two uses. And we believe that any impacts to, to existing vegetation in this area won't negatively impact the view shed of the neighbors. And in fact, if I can get back, so that's, that's location A, which is the furthest from the residential areas. As you can see, that's already been cleared. That's actually was cleared. The transmission line comes in through here, and that's essentially the only usable portion of the site that we have. It's tucked as close to US One as we possibly can. This is section B, and so this is the location that would be, in theory, closest to the neighborhood. As you can see, and this is in the winter, obviously, so this is, is, is less, this is the least opaque this vista will be at any time during the year. And as you can see, the houses are not visible from this picture. And removal of that vegetation won't change it again because it's densely vegetated in that location. And then lastly, we're not, we can't put any additional parking in here. There's a stormwater facility in here that's necessary to support the uses, so there's no additional parking proposed there. And then the last piece is on the opposite side of our building. And so I just, I want to reiterate, this is something that's being necessitated by, necessitated by the market for these uses. We are doing what we can to ensure that there won't be any visible impact associated with it, that it won't disrupt the neighbors, neighbors' lives. I will say, I've been in contact with the neighbors this week. We had a neighborhood meeting. One of the things we heard at that neighborhood meeting was a concern associated with the buffer impact adjacent to US One. And as we left that neighborhood meeting, we sharpened our pencils, and the owner determined that they didn't actually need five point five spaces, and they didn't need to impact the therapeutic corridor buffer, so that was removed. That request was removed as part of the zoning case prior to coming to public hearing. I've been in contact with the neighbors this week, provided them updated information associated with the proposal, and I'm happy to meet with them, and I committed to Counselor Smith. We spoke with him earlier today. We're more than happy to meet the neighbors on the site, walk it. If there are continued concerns associated with the impact of this use and potential increase in parking, we're more than happy to work with those folks. And so with that, we appreciate you all's careful consideration of the case and look forward to working through the zoning process with you all, as well as the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing, seventeen REZ twenty-six, Regency Park PDD Amendment, and I would invite Mr. Alexander back to the podium.
Like that picture that shows, like the... Just the whole big picture. That's fine. So this is a second opportunity to say hello to the mayor, town council members, and Ms. Spearman. I'm on the HOA Board for the Renaissance Cottages at Regency. I have a few homeowners out here, too, if you don't mind raising your hand. So you could tell we're a little bit interested in this particular project. We are here to oppose the expansion of the project for a number of grounds. I do appreciate that they've proposed some changes to the project, but I think when you look at this and maybe listen to this, you'll understand some of the concerns that we have. And I'm actually glad that the slide got popped up. Our homeowners association is about a hundred and ninety-one homes. Actually, along the Angelica Circle side over there, you can see the new development. I can almost point out my lot, so I've got a direct line of sight into the spot. The developer talks about the fact that they need to, quote, "increase the parking spaces to meet market need." I took a count, as if I had no time in my day, of the existing parking spots. There are four hundred and fifty-eight spots. I counted four hundred and forty, but actually, council said four hundred and fifty-eight spots currently for a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Honestly, it's one of the biggest parking lots for a building of this size, putting aside, I have not walked the MetLife property that I've ever seen. I'd encourage you to put cones and take your cars around it. It's wide open right now. We wonder why they cannot simply restripe. And while we understand that a number of tenants in these days, in this market, are apparently encouraging the expansion of space, and I don't debate it, to some degree, it feels like a field of dreams here. If they build it, they will come. And if they build it and they will come, they will need open spaces on all floors, justifying moving from four hundred and fifty-eight to nearly six hundred open spots. We just haven't seen it. We've heard the issue, but it hasn't been presented. If you look up here, up on the top over here, one thing I want to point out to you is that this buffer has already been reduced to fifty feet. Originally, what you see over here is that the buffer is a hundred feet. The applicant was awarded a request years ago to already cut the buffer back. So we appreciate that they're going to stay with the current buffer, but there's already been changes. Also, if you recall the slide that showed the watershed through here, this is a property that is sandwiched between a watershed over here. This over here is actually a stormwater retention pond on this side. And with all due respect to the applicant, this is a very thinly shredded line of trees, primarily because they do not take in that particular area of the creek. We have some questions about the applicant in terms of their project. There is a retaining wall that runs around this property. Significant portions over here in terms of holding back stormwater. There's a retaining wall on this side, all to present, going, prevent going into this creek. We don't see, and I do understand, that a proposal has been submitted today in terms of how that will be addressed. I do understand that there are some utility lines that run back here, but I've seen no discussion presented over any other landscaping or other opportunities that might be addressed by the applicant. From our vantage, it's really hard to imagine how the tenant needs it, but we believe it will impact the value of our homes and the quality of life. This neighborhood is being built out. The Regency Cottage area has changed. It was originally an office park, but look, we attend Cocoa Booth. The homes that have been built around here have changed dramatically over the last ten years at this point in time. This is a sensitive area. We believe that this parking lot will give clear line of sight. It'll expand the noise. It'll impact the homes that are here. We have a lot of questions about the viability of the project. The applicant just submitted today their proposal, of which I have concerns even having looked at it. We note also that the town approved another project, if you haven't had a chance to see. I'm not here to debate that one today, with another building that's being built, cut through here, with an additional seven hundred spots. Between this and this, we're talking about eight hundred and fifty spots. Eder Lee is over here, and if you haven't been to Cocoa Booth during a evening performance, or if you have, you know that this road backs up. Four lanes here, two lanes here. We've seen no effort by the applicant to address any of those concerns.
Mr. Alexander, I'm sorry I have to stop you, but your time has expired. If you have comments you'd like for us to see, if you'd leave them with the clerks, she'll make sure we get a copy.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next speaker.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Alan Sullivan. I also live in the Regency Cottage area. I moved there five years ago, and many of my neighbors have been there longer. When we moved into the area, many of us actually looked at the Regency Park PPD. The name Regency Park was created not only to identify the project, but also to project an image of the overall feeling one should get when traversing the project. The entire development will be integrated with green belts and open spaces, providing such amenities as jogging trails, nature trails, a central lake, and recreational facilities, all designed to enhance the total quality of life of all the residents within Regency Park. The existing topography and the vegetation be used as much as possible to preserve the integrity of the site. Where this is not feasible, every measure will be taken to restructure the landscape so as to provide the natural settings as possible. So this project is about more asphalt. Mr. Alexander was about to talk about the development. I think we need to look at Regency Park holistically. I think we need to look at all of the activities that are going on there, and then consider this project within that total view. Anyone who hasn't been to Regency Park in the last month, I would highly recommend you go. Stand in Cocoa Booth, look across the lake, and then decide, have we done enough building in this area? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing. Mr. Smith, this is your district. I know you're actively involved in this discussion. I'll turn it over to you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I think in a way, this kind of caught, caught some of us by surprise of the concern. I mean, if we're looking at it at face value, we're adding some parking spaces. And we're adding parking spaces in an area that's been designed and planned. I met with Mr. Alexander and one of the others. They shared with me the concerns, and they made, they made some interesting points, of which, you know, I found interesting at the time. For example, I found it, at the time, I found it peculiar that we were going with a rezoning rather than a quasi-judicial. And because with a quasi-judicial, then you could just look at the parking. But interestingly, when you talk to legal and all aspects, with a rezoning, we allow more citizen feedback. As you know, with a quasi-judicial, we're basically, we as a council are basically taken out of that interaction and so forth. So I, I was kind of leery at the time I met with the folks at why it was a rezoning, but once I got the chance to talk to staff and others, now I understand that the intent was that we have more transparency and full disclosure. So I want to, I want to be upfront about that because when I was talking to the citizens, I kind of, it kind of jumped out at me. I said, geez, why isn't this a QJ? So I think I've answered that. The other question I had while listening to the citizens' concerns is the, not negligible, but the fact that staff can, just on a standard staff review, can add sixty-six spaces. I actually thought with some of the reconfigurations and some of the emails I got today, it was higher than that. I thought you could go up to ninety, but never, nevertheless, they're looking at basically a net eighty-four that they're bringing to council. We, as it goes through the process, if we feel this is not appropriate, the staff still can expand the parking. You know, that's, that's the reality that came to me. While meeting with the, not the applicant, excuse me, the citizens, I had Mary Berry there, and we were looking at the flexibility, or the lack of flexibility, and we were looking at those, those red circles, and which, can you put that, that one up? And the, the reality is, if you look at this, I think the one on the immediate left and the one on the immediate right would, would be staff-approved. So now we're talking about the balance. And now, as came up tonight, the one on the lower right, because of the stormwater commitments, nothing's going to be built there. So now it's a matter of taking advantage of some of that restriping, you know, et cetera. The applicants, excuse me, the citizens made it clear that, you know, they were happy about the fifty-foot, going back to the fifty-foot buffer, and as they pointed out tonight, originally, that area was a hundred foot, but for various reasons years ago, you know, that was cut to fifty. The other concern I had at that time, when I was meeting with them, is I did not see any interaction with, with the citizens. I mean, the people under there are finally seeing the, the results of planning from the eighties. I mean, a lot of the stuff, you know, we went through this with the sites that the, the individual talked to us about farther up. Where he said, look at, just look across Cocoa Booth, and you can see what's happening. That's been on the books. This area was always going to be an employment center. So, having said that, reached out to the applicant, and coincidentally, not because of me, he was already reaching out and sent information to the citizens. You know, I think tonight, the, the only message that I have is I was glad to see that that activity has happened, and I encourage, as this thing goes through the process, that the citizens meet with the applicant. The applicant has assured me earlier today, when I met with him, that he began to meet with the citizens in their community or out there where all this is happening, and look at that, and look at what they can do with opaque buffers or things that can help. So on the surface, you know, when I first got involved and heard from the community, I had a lot of questions, as they did tonight. I was fortunate enough to be able to meet with the applicant earlier, get some of them answered, not necessarily all, but some of them. And I appreciated their willingness to reach out and, and agree to meet with the citizens. I encourage you, as this moves forward through the process. We heard some comments tonight about we should look at this holistically. Well, guess what? We did when we created the master plan. But we are constrained, we are constrained by what we can consider to this application and this. The, the citizens shared about some of the clear-cutting that happened just for their development to expand. And then the other piece that came up was the constraint of Duke Energy and all of that transmission. So there's a lot of factors at play here. There's a lot of balls in the air. I'm not going to debate the merit of considering extra parking for the future, and is that a self-fulfilling prophecy? I think staff has, in talking to staff, we've realized that a lot of our parking ratios need to be revisited, just for the fact that the model of how people work and where they work is, is changing. And that, when I met with them, I thought the ratio met our needs and was suffice. Now, they should not be caught in the middle, but the reality is, if you look at other recent developments, we have approved them because the reality is that we need more of that parking density. That's going to be your personal call as to how important it is on this case. But all things said, when I'm looking at it, I just wanted to make sure that the community understood that since I met with you, that we've reached out to the applicant, the staff has revisited the algorithms. I think you have some data, I hope you do, on what some of those parking ratios are. And I would just ask, as we continue this discussion, you might let Mary just share some of those parking ratios. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that the applicant is willing to work with the neighborhood, and so am I. So if we need to have other meetings, and I need to be part of that, I'll be glad to do that. But Mary, if you could give us some of the parking ratios.
Yes, I do have some information on some of the ratios in the area. Regency Lakeside, this is one at eleven thousand Regency Parkway. On your consent agenda tonight, you actually ratified the decision that was made on December seventh through the QJ process to increase that ratio to four point four, which is just slightly over the four point three that can be done administratively. Also, Regency Woods, it was mentioned, the property on the opposite, you know, across from the amphitheater, there's a site plan underway with that, and that would allow four point three spaces per thousand, which is up to the administrative limit. Some of that is in structured parking. Weston Lakefront Three, that's a portion of the MetLife campus. That has a ratio of four point oh, again, with some of that in structured parking. And finally, Center Green Three, which is in Center Green Park, actually has structured parking as well, and that one actually goes up to six point one. So those are some of the ratios that we have in the area. We did recently amend the land development ordinance to allow an unlimited increase if it's in structured parking. And this proposal is all for surface parking, which, so it wouldn't qualify for that.
So we didn't change, excuse me, we didn't change the numbers for impervious surface, even though we've received a whole bunch of requests in the last year for increases of, of parking. We haven't changed that, but we changed it for structured.
Right, for, for structured parking, if, if someone is wanting to have the structured parking, I think given the cost of going vertical with that, that there's some, somewhat self- I think given the cost of going, uh, vertical with that, that there's some, somewhat self-limiting, but we don't, um, limit the number if it's structured.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, and I think-
I was wondering, because it's, so it's three or three point three? I heard both.
It's three, the correct number is, current is three point, three point three-three. It's, um, three hundred, um, square feet per-
Okay.
Or one space per three hundred thou, per three hundred thou, three hundred square feet, so it's three point three-three.
And I don't know if the staff is involved in this or not, but my understanding from the applicant is it's, uh, it doesn't work with structured parking here because of the commitment or the conditions imposed by Duke Energy. So, I mean, that's what I've heard. I, that's just got to be verified. I, I don't know.
Yes, that, that would certainly be a limitation there.
I've got two questions, two quick ones. One is, in, in that buffered area, the, the stream buffer between that, um, I'm directionally challenged. Western most site, uh, the circle, western, no, they keep going, more west. That's east, I think. North is up still. Then, uh, you, we're both challenged. Uh, we don't need to get, give each other directions. The, can, can plantings be put in the stream buffer? They just can't, can, can you disturb a buffer, a stream buffer and put plantings in a stream buffer?
No.
You not do anything in a stream buffer? Stream buffer is a stream, even though it's got current plantings in it. So the trees fall down in the woods, even if you hear them, they're still, they're still gone.
Yeah.
There you go.
They're still gone. Okay. That was my question. Um, that was first question. The second one is, if we keep talking about changing ratios of traffic spaces, uh, of, not traffic, parking spaces, but traffic studies are based on occupancy or square footage, then I think we may ought to think about doing traffic studies based on parking spaces. Because those directly correlate as opposed to square footage and bedroom, and, and, and people versus, for traffic studies. Because it seems to me like if we start, this'll, this'll get our whole, it'll skew our whole need for a traffic study if we start increasing the number of spaces for the same-sized building or going to an apartment building and putting a lot less spaces. I'm just one of that-
Well, they use modeling software. I'll let Mary be on, they use modeling software. It's not, it's already-
But he says because they didn't increase the building size, there's no traffic study needed. And that, that's interesting to me.
The, the, the traffic stu, because there is a, a, there is some variability as to the number of spaces that would actually be constructed. And at the time of a rezoning, you may not, I mean, uh, the applicant wouldn't know the exact number of spaces because there is a range. And the reason for that range is there would be difficulty in saying you have to have an exact number of parking spaces, so there's variability. The, the requirement for the traffic study is done at the time of the rezoning, and it's based on the information that's available at that time, which is going to be the use in the square footage. That being said, in any rezoning case, one of the factors that you can take into consideration making your decision is traffic impact. And, uh, you can certainly evaluate that issue based on the information you have in the absence of a traffic study.
We would get that. Um, right, determination, okay.
So you can certainly address that, that issue, um, even if there's not an actual traffic study required.
One of the citizens brought up, and, or maybe it was also Mr. Barron, about a BMP being currently located up in the far-left circle. But I thought the BMP was also, was mentioned to be down there. Where is the BMP today?
Well, there's an existing, um, structure in this location. I would ask the applicant, I think, to provide more clarification there. I don't know if there's additional structures that would be needed, but there is, um, a BMP up in this western area.
And then my next question would be, do they, does that need to be reevaluated with an, an additional hundred and fifty spaces of impervious surface?
Right. So I was just, there is a BMP in this location as well. Certainly when the development plan comes in, um, that would be reviewed for compliance. If there were changes that were, were needed, the site would, you know, need to be reworked to accommodate stormwater in accordance with our ordinance. And that was just one of the, um, points that, that we made in that, just in looking at the site, there are, you know, some type of, there's a lot of topography on the site. So there would need to be some reworking in order to fit the parking in. But whatever is done would need to be reviewed according, in accordance with our land development ordinance and all those requirements and be adjusted.
No matter how much parking they add, they can't eliminate a BMP. They still have to manage the runoff and comply with town regulations, right?
That's right.
An additional runoff.
I just wanted to understand.
And I, I would just point out too, that even with the rezoning, we've mentioned, based on a numerical calculation, there could be up to a hundred and fifty space, additional spaces, based on the numbers. But if it doesn't work for the site, that's not an entitlement of a hundred and fifty spaces if you can't get it to work.
Which is a great thing. They have an office user in town that's doing well and/or to remain competitive, needs to add more spaces. And that's a great problem to have. I mean, I hate to say it, but I, I haven't heard a compelling case why this is a bad thing to do. I mean, I, I just really haven't. I don't see any new parking going in any closer to the existing residence that already exists. I don't see why with a little creativity, some other plantings might be used or landscaped in a way to help better hide it. The building is closer than any of the new parking would be. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of amazed we're still talking about this one. Well, the, you know, I think, you know, again, trying to represent the perspective that I heard. I get it. You know, and, and appealing to the, um, uh, the applicant is to work with them. It is a, you know, that, this Google map looks nice and full and green that was passed around. But you take a right out of there, the topography is pretty severe. It's pretty stripped out. It's pretty parcel, if you saw some of those other pictures. And, uh, what I was appealing for is, uh, you know, to address the concerns, what you brought up, is that I think there's enough room there, excuse me, to have, uh, some buffering, you know, opaque buffering of type, if the, was the applicant and the, you know, the citizens can work on it. And I think there's time to do that. And by, you know, removing that one circle, because that's where your BMP is going to go, you know, I think once citizens see that, that we're mitigating the amount, um, the amount of encroachment on their area, you know, I think, I think, I have hope that we can make something work. Mr. George brings up some good points about traffic, but at that, at the same time, what we're talking about is, is a net of about eighty units, which, uh, spaces that, that we're deciding on, and it probably won't be that number because they have to comply with all these other things. So you, you're right in the aspect that, in the sense that the staff can just about get it there. But the applicant has the right to look at, uh, what they believe, based on the market, will make that site attractive. It's now being emptied, you know, and they're looking for a new, you know.
I have a question, just for curiosity. Okay, so staff could approve a parking increase up to a certain number. Okay, say you did it, all right. A year later, can they come back and ask for another staff increase up to a certain number? Or is it all based on the original approval?
That would, well, it would be based on the, um, three point, three-three spaces per thousand square feet as a starting point.
Okay, so you, like, you wouldn't create, you wouldn't create a new baseline if you got a staff approval?
No.
Okay, because that would seem like a way easier way to go.
Other questions, comments?
Sneaky.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, for those that are attending, we thank you for being here. This is going to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. They will review this item in probably a little over a month from now. And it'll probably take at least a couple of months before it comes back to us for a decision. And at that time, we will make a decision, more than likely.
And I hope during that time that the two groups get together.
The good news is, the applicant has been before us many times. When he says he's going to work with you, he's going to do that because he comes before us a lot and he doesn't want to get mud on his name. So, uh, please sit down and work with Mr. Barron. He'll be glad to work with you. So thank you all for being here. We now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is six point one bid award for the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project. Alex Lopez, first time presenting to council, welcome.
Thank you.
He will give us a report and council may take action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight I will be presenting the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project. Safe, high-quality, and dependable water service plays a vital role in several areas which affect the quality of life of our citizens. In November of two thousand seventeen, the town's drinking water was once again honored by the North Carolina Section of the American Water Works Association as one of the best tasting waters in the entire state. And it's important that the pipes delivering this outstanding water be maintained and, when necessary, be replaced. And that's what the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project is all about. Water main replacement has been an essential practice dating back to when transmission mains were made of wood. Here at the town, our oldest pipes are from the nineteen twenties, and we do not have any wooden pipes in our system. But we do have some well-established areas where the existing pipes are susceptible to potential issues. Our annual water main replacement program proactively plans and funds to replace these existing age and susceptible pipes with new, high-quality duct-to-iron pipes, which are expected to have a service life of at least a hundred years. A variety of factors can cause water main breaks. And when evaluating the pipes we replace each year, we take into account a host of these factors, which include the pipe age and pipe material, the surrounding soil conditions, the severity of potential citizen impacts in the event of a failure, such as the recent water main break along Harrison Avenue, as well as line break and line repair history. Also, in order to maximize our efficiency and further our one-carry approach, we coordinate our water mains chosen each year with the town's annual street improvement program, which will be presented to council at the next town council meeting in two weeks. This year's project is scheduled to replace approximately twenty-two thousand linear feet of water mains and is divided into two parts, Part A and Part B. Part A's project areas are spread throughout the town and consist of some of our older neighborhoods. Part A of the project includes approximately eleven thousand linear feet of water mains that were not completed within the time allotted during the two thousand seventeen water main replacement project. Due to the current bidding climate, we felt it was appropriate to divide the project into two parts in order to achieve more competitive bidding. Included with Part A is a bid alternate, which will add meters to seven existing reclaimed water flushing locations, five in the northern part of town, and two in the Middle Creek Park area. Due to the meter project's small scope of work, it was included so that we may take advantage of economies of scale. These meters will work as checks and balances for our reclaimed water system and improve its overall efficiency by now accurately capturing previously estimated flows at these locations. On November twenty-ninth, three bids were received for Part A of the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project, and Pipeline Utilities was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Part B of the project also includes the replacement of approximately eleven thousand linear feet of water lines in three areas of downtown. Once again, these neighborhoods are some of our more well-established areas in the town. And on December thirteenth, three bids were received for Part B of the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project, with Pipeline Utilities again coming in as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The next steps for the project include notice of award for both Part A and Part B of the project to Pipeline Utilities, execution of both contracts, and starting construction for both Part A and Part B in the spring of this year. Staff recommends that council award Pipeline Utilities the two thousand eighteen water main replacement project contract for Part A for a total of two million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, and for Part B for a total of three point one million dollars. I will now welcome any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Questions for Mr. Lopez?
I would have raised it fifty cents and just made it.
It would have made my life easier.
It's a little weird.
I make a motion that we award the pipe to, the, um, contract to Pipeline Utilities per staff recommendation.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. The opposed, motion's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our second discussion item. Six point two is the Cary Parkway High House Road Intersection Improvements Construction Bid Award. Amir Nazerati.
That's right.
Got it. Nazerati will give a report and council may take action.
Yes, Alex's first time. I've been up here before, right?
Yep, you have.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight I'm going to be following up on this Cary Parkway and High House Road intersection improvements project. The improvements at this intersection include new dedicated right-turn lanes at each approach, and additional left-turn lanes at each approach, except for southbound Cary Parkway. In addition, the sex of this area make this a signature intersection for Cary. Therefore, other improvements included in this project include new decorative traffic signals, a distinctive bus shelter design, upgraded street lighting, and new meandering sidewalks. You may remember, back earlier this summer, or last summer now, uh, we held a, held a bid opening where we received only one bid, which was rejected due to it being significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. Before re-advertising, we collaborated with NC DOT and the construction industry to improve our contract documents with the goal to reduce risks and also update our construction estimates. We made changes, including starting the project during the beginning of this construction season, and we provided more information regarding the underground utilities out there. With these changes, I'm excited to report that we received three bids in November, and we are preparing to move towards construction. While we are excited to get this project under construction, additional funding totaling about one point two million dollars is needed to complete it. We have leveraged our strong relationships with Campo to receive an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. An additional two hundred thousand dollars has been allocated to the project from a developer agreement with Bradford. Therefore, about an additional four hundred and forty thousand dollars of town funding is needed to complete the project. Overall, approximately seventy-five percent of the project is being funded by these outside sources, allowing us to do more with our resources. And in summary, staff recommends award of the construction of Cary Parkway and High House Road Intersection Improvements to Fred Smith Company for two million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, and adopt the resolution that's attached to the staff report. In addition, we recommend appropriating the necessary funds needed to complete the project and authorize the town manager to enter into a supplemental agreement with NC DOT to receive the additional federal funds. After concurrence of bid award from NC DOT, the notice of award and contracts will be sent for Fred Smith, to Fred Smith Company for, um, execution. We will finalize and execute agreements with NC DOT and Campo for the additional funding. We will continue our public outreach efforts. And, uh, just this week, Duke Energy Progress has started relocation of their underground facilities, and we will continue these efforts. Construction is anticipated to begin this spring. And that concludes the presentation. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Nazerati? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to our next discussion item, six point three, seventeen RE-ZO-seven Urban Drive Rezoning. Ms. Gruber will give a report. We're going to hear from the Planning Board with their recommendation, and council may take action. Ms. Gruber.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberg. Good evening. This is a rezoning request for zero point one-nine acres in downtown Cary. It's on Urban Drive. It's a very charming location. And right now, I'd like to invite Ted Boyd to speak a little bit about downtown.
Thank you, Meredith, and good evening, council. Wanted to share a little bit about what's happening in our downtown because anytime, um, we're looking at downtown, we, we just need to know what's happening. And I think it helps, uh, inform our residents that are living downtown. So, uh, you can, as we zoom out just a little bit, we can see about easy walking distance to some great amenities, um, already in our downtown area, Urban Park. Just to the north of the site will be the Chatham Wall Condo Project. We've got the Midtown Square, uh, uh, development that's complete, but we're starting to see the changes there with, uh, new restaurants, uh, Bond Brothers, the Tutu School, and then a new event space that was announced just, uh, this, I think this week, uh, as well. And then the revitalization that's happening in the Cedar Street area as well with, uh, an additional restaurant, fitness facilities. And so it's neat to s, to see our revitalization efforts happening, um, and, and becoming and creating new amenities for our downtown area. I want to share a, a couple of things while it, it's not, um, sometimes it's, can get confusing when you're talking about the property under- you're talking about the property under rezoning, but there's a lot of things happening around it, and I wanted to share a few things about the Chatham Walk condos specifically, because some questions have come up. This is the Williams House, and while it's not a requirement, the developer is going to relocate this house just a little bit down on Chatham Street, a little bit west from its current site. And then you can see the, from this photo, the building off to the right side, but you can see sort of its, the original character to it. It was originally painted brick, and really that architecture were some pieces that really influenced the design of the condo project as well. The applicant also shared some things that did come up, was a little bit understanding sort of the massing and some transitions that could happen. So just to illustrate a little bit, this would be the perspective if you had just the one house as it remained, a transition from the four-story condos down to just the one-story, single-family house, and then if they were to proceed, be able to move forward, you can see a little bit of how the townhomes have been discussed, could work within that, show a little bit of a different angle as well, looking from a different perspective. And then again, being able to help create a transition as it moves down to the rest of the houses within the neighborhood. Just wanted to share a few things with that, and then Meredith to come back and share the rest of the presentation on the rezoning.
Thanks, Ted. So back to the rezoning case, the subject property is at 110 Urban Drive between East Chatham Street and Waldo Street. The zoning has been in place for about 15 years, timed when the Town Center Area Plan was approved by council. So the existing zoning is Town Center Medium Density Residential, and that is a zoning category that allows four to eight units per acre with housing types like townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, and single-family homes. The applicant proposes to change the zoning to Town Center Mixed Use Conditional Use, and mixed use allows commercial office and all types of residential, medium to high-density residential housing types. So the current zoning district, Medium Density Residential, has a 45-foot height limit, and about one unit could be built on a 0.19-acre piece of property. The proposed zoning district, Town Center Mixed Use, has the same building height, 45 feet, and you could build about five units on that piece of property. So again, both the current and proposed zoning districts have the same height limit. The applicant has also proposed six zoning conditions. The first one limits the uses to Townhouse, multifamily dwelling, and/or neighborhood recreation center. The conditions also cover stormwater runoff, frontage along Urban Drive, buffer and fencing between 110 and 114 Urban Drive, architectural materials. And I'd like to point out that the sixth condition, adding a 10-foot building setback between 110 and 114, was added by the applicant following the Planning and Zoning Board The request to rezone 110 Urban Drive is fully supported by the Imagine Cary Community Plan policies and the Live/Shape chapters, including the Downtown Spa. The Future Growth Framework shows the property in the Downtown Special Planning Area or Spa. And the site is in the Central Chatham subareas. You can see downtown is made up into five subareas. Central Chatham is Cary's Main Street. So the vision for Central Chatham is to have a walkable mixed-use corridor along with a supporting neighborhood. And a supporting neighborhood is meant to be a special place to live in downtown where you can walk quickly to dining, entertainment, and other good things. There are proposed street-side trails near the property. There are also both Go Cary and Go Triangle fixed transit routes near the site. While the site is not impacted by stream buffers or floodways, again, I'd like to point out the applicant offered a condition to divert stormwater from the townhome roofs to the pipe in East Chatham Street that goes towards Urban Park. Community feedback happened throughout 2017 and into early 2018, first at the neighborhood meeting last March, second at the town council public hearing, and also at the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing. The concerns were consistent throughout character of the neighborhood, transitions between land uses, buffers, and setbacks. At this time, I'd like to invite Mark Evangelista up to talk about the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and their recommendation.
Thank you. Hello again. Well, this was voted down by a seven-to-one decision. I will, our planning and zoning meetings are on TV. You can go see what people say. It's for the record, so I feel okay quoting some folks. One of our board members felt this was saying no to gentrification. I'll just put that out there. The...
I didn't hear that.
I really love what Mr. Boyd said.
He had a concern about gentrification.
Yes. I love the picture Mr. Boyd put up just a few moments ago, because there was a concern that it would just be too abrupt to have that fourplex that was put in on the applicant property as a transition over to those two homes that would exist to the south. And that depicts very well what the concerns were for some of the other board members. And just the density, sooner or later, you're going to have a single-family detached home and a much higher-density unit next to it, whether it's the applicant property or later on moving, just, everybody just shifts one more down, and you'd have that again. Another consideration in the denial was, let's see where that is, that that house that exists is a low-income house. So you don't have to build low-income housing, you already have it here, why get rid of one? So that was another consideration. The vote against the denial, which would have been a vote for the project, simply said that the two parcels to the south are already medium-density. If they wanted to turn around and put a two or three-unit building on, they don't even have to come before us. Now that little house would be in between two larger complexes. So this is kind of made for that, and this is a transition. Again, we talked earlier about time. This is one of those rezonings where we're thinking down the road, when the other development happens, it will be a transition, whereas now it is not. So that's a consideration. One thing I really want to point out, both the votes for and the votes against, every last board member applauded the conditions, that the applicant really tried to make it work with putting conditions on that address concerns everywhere. In fact, one of the concerns we had was setbacks, and now that's also in a condition to mitigate that as well. So I really got to say, we were quite impressed with the level of zoning conditions that were put forward to try to make this thing work, but it did get voted down. That's all I have on this.
Questions for Mr. Evangelista?
Thank you.
So staff does recommend approval of the requested zone 110 Urban Drive. Both the current and proposed zoning districts do allow townhomes. We do believe the applicant has provided conditions that will help create reasonable transitions between existing and new development, and the request is consistent with policies in the Live and Shape chapters in the Downtown Special Planning Area. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Don't be shocked.
I didn't know Don wanted to start, had he?
He'll back clean up.
Okay. All right, I'll be.
Back clean up.
So I had a setback question while you're up there. Did the current MDR setback on the sides and rear, what is that current setback of someone, what they could build there if we don't rezone versus what they could if we do rezone?
Sure. The setbacks for MDR with attached or semi-detached, like a townhome, the front setback would be 10 feet if there is not a driveway in front, 18 feet if there is a driveway. The side setback would be zero to three feet, and there would be requirement for 16 feet between groups of buildings, so technically you could build right on the property line if there's not something already next to it. The rear setback would be 10 feet for medium-density residential.
That's MDR, right. And what is the new setbacks, not with conditions?
Right.
If there were no conditions, what's the MXD setback?
There are no setbacks for MXD.
On any side?
Right, correct.
What is the street, closest they could build to the street MXD?
I guess behind the right-of-way line.
Which is, but you've got the two feet, and then the sidewalk, and then the...
Typically, it's behind the sidewalk. We'd have to check and see exactly where the right-of-way line is.
That was my question for, I think my comment would be, I think Ms. Clark, you know, showed up to speak, spoke eloquently tonight. I think the fact that just one person showed up is not an indication that people aren't opposed to it. There are people that just chose not, I think maybe they thought it was a foregone conclusion. She did a nice job in presenting her position and where she's stuck, because she's right in that picture where the drive on Urban Drive is, and she's going to be sandwiched between MXD on all sides. It's not just two sides or across, it's going to be behind her as well, could be developed. So I see where she's coming from. I feel like there's two big pluses that call, that calls for, one, the one big plus is we are stepping down from four stories to three stories. And I think about transitions, that makes sense to me that we're going to step down, because otherwise you've got one-story house looking at four, that's got underground parking under it versus four down to three. So I like that. I also feel like this is, the stormwater is a positive, because we're taking the stormwater, piping it up and around, it's going to dump into Urban Park, the big gully back behind there, which currently, the stormwater in the front of the house can just run down Urban Drive down the hill, and it'll be piped around. So I think that's another positive. The other thing I think when I hear about dominoes and dominoes falling, I think if we do transition, we are, it's like putting a stop at the end of the dominoes at some point, because if you're transitioning down and getting shorter, and we're doing that going from four to three, then it's not going to go back up again. It's not going to get higher on the other side, because that's not appropriate transition if we follow the Cary Community Plan. So to me, it makes sense, and I'm in favor of doing this approval, because I believe we've got the right kind of transition and the right conditions put on, especially with the 10-foot setback, knowing that if it was MDR, they can go right to the line on the side, zero to three feet anyway. And I appreciate Ms. Clark's point of view as well, because she's going to have headlights in her house just from people leaving the condos, and so I understand her point of view, and I understand that they're working to address that, and I appreciate that work. So that's my comments.
Other comments? Ms. Smith? Ms. Robbins?
No.
Well, you know, when this first came out, I was kind of struggling with all the transition that we're doing and all of that. I think in the end, we've spent so much time investing in this concept for downtown, and the harsh reality is that there is going to be a period of time where there will be, you know, like an earthquake, where both sides are rubbing against each other. I actually think we'd be making a stronger statement staying at four stories. That's how strong I feel about it. I think we have a, this is a great area that's going to continue to grow and blend with our vision and our concept downtown. I understand the challenges and the concerns of folks in the area, but I don't think it's to be crass, not life-threatening. It's a matter of, this is the type of investment, I think, that sends a message of our commitment to downtown revitalization. You know, I think I was talking to Ted Boyd, or I'm pretty sure it was Ted, and we were talking about the luxury now of having to deal with good getting in the way of great, and I just love that concept. I mean, there are a lot of things that are going on that are good, and they're happening downtown, yet some of those actually compete with the vision of how and where we want things in downtown. And I actually, that's why I like the idea of it being four-story, and I like the idea of sending the message that that isn't where the line is for transition. I think the line for transition is going to be farther down as it continues to go. I know that sounds harsh, I know that sounds terrible, that doesn't mean we can't work with the existing neighbors in the community, but I think this, in fairness, I guess, is the good compromise with all of the conditions and so forth. And, you know, I'm looking forward to that, but, you know, I do respect that there's going to be some tough times ahead of us as we look at that transition to what's happening downtown.
I tend to agree. I think the transitions, like Mr. Evangelista said, are all about timing, and we're going to face that a lot as downtown redevelops, the timing of it. You're going to have big next to small, so that's going to be tough to try to weigh the pros and cons of that timing. Another issue with these residents down here is stormwater. Not only is this taking stormwater away, but we're doing an inventory, is my understanding, I'm looking at Ms. Stiegel, and we're going to see what we can do. We're going to come up with solutions. They're not going to be cheap, and they're not going to be easy, but we're going to come up with some solutions to help some of these people that are suffering from stormwater issues. So we have to make sure we keep that as a separate issue, because that issue exists whether this is developed or not. So we need to put that aside and take this for what's being proposed. So based on that, I also support it, and respecting Mrs. Clark, I understand her issues as well. What about down on this end?
In the spirit of not repeating anything anyone else said, as excited as we have been as a council about the revitalization and all the updates, I mean, we've seen what's happened with the fountain in that area. We've seen what's happened around Bond Brothers and the new businesses. This is the first residential one that's really come in, and it certainly, obviously, will have, you know, folks on both sides coming in some for it and some against it. But I look at all the pros and cons, right? The pro of stormwater being mitigated, the pro of the fact that, you know, the same-size building could be built without them even coming to council. So they got actually more conditions that they wouldn't, if they just went and built a house that big, they wouldn't get the masonry, they wouldn't get all these other things that we're getting. And the transition from the condos to the townhomes to the homes also seems like a good plan. We already have it on Academy. We've got the Maitin Inn right next to a single-family house, right? So you can see that today, and I honestly think that it would be better, you know, not saying that that house isn't beautiful right there, but I do think that there is, where transition fits, let's use it. So, you know, barring any other, you know, possible greater thing that would come into us, I think this is a really good fit. And I also think it's kind of a turning point for this council. I mean, I hate to say it that, but it's really, you know, put your money where your mouth is. Are we really committed to this Cary Community Plan that our community envisioned? We didn't envision it, they envisioned it.
They created it.
They created it, and that's what we said we wanted here. So are we committed or not? And so that's why I support this plan.
Mr. Yurha, anything?
Yeah, I guess I struggled with this one for a long time. And it's odd, because I support the vision for the Chatham Street Carter in the Cary Community Plan, and this particular plan before us absolutely complies with that vision. There's no doubt about it. So I really had to ask myself why I struggled with this, and it is, I guess, the timing aspect. Mr. Evangelista dealt with that a little bit earlier. The Cary Community Plan is a guide for the next 25 years or thereabouts, and it's the way we want the town to look like in 2040. But it doesn't mean that everything included in it is maybe right for 2018. And I guess that's the struggle. So in this case, is it right, was the question I've asked myself for the past few weeks, is it right to start changing a single-family neighborhood like this by replacing a single-family home with townhomes? Is it the right thing to do at this time? And the answer to that question is, I don't know. That's where I came up with after all this time, is I don't know. I'm not convinced that it is the right time to change it, but I am convinced that although waiting may be preferable to do something here on Urban Drive, after looking at this project in detail, the conditions attached to it, and everything else, and talking to people, I'm not sure that any amount of waiting will produce a better redevelopment proposal. better redevelopment proposal than the one that's in front of us tonight. So I support it. But I urge us to look carefully at each proposal coming before us down here. As Ms. Bush just said, this is the first one like this. And it does signal a turning point, and we want to make sure we turn in the right direction on this. I don't want this, personally, I hope it doesn't send a message or signal to the development community that, hey, we're ready to take every single-family home away downtown and put a townhome in its place right away today. I hope it doesn't signal that. What I hope it signals is that we are ready and eager to entertain quality proposals like the one we've seen tonight.
I actually asked the bear, not calling me first on this one. I kind of wanted to give you guys a chance to, you know, give your thoughts and opinions without me saying everything and then leaving nothing to be talked about. And then I also kind of wanted to hear the thoughts and opinions of my colleagues without me having said anything. So I appreciate that. A lot that should be said has been said, but there are a couple of points that came out I just kind of wanted to speak to. I don't know that I'd call it a turning point for council. I'd call it a turning point for downtown.
Yeah.
That what's before us tonight and what is going to come is exactly what we've been trying to get for a decade or more. You know, all of our investments, whether that be the streetscape, or sidewalks, or the downtown park, or Cary Arts Center, the theater, or the Business Improvement District, or eliminating impact fees downtown, they have all been done with the goal of, one, making it a super awesome place to be, but incenting the private investment, and that is now happening. We did a video earlier today, and they asked the question, sum up the year in three words. And my response is, it's finally happening. And, you know, it's...
Three words? It's a contraction.
Yeah, math is hard. But it's just, we're finally getting to that point where the private sector is stepping up. We've remained committed to our plans. We've remained committed to downtown. We've put our money, or the taxpayers' money, where our mouth is, and they are finally responding. You know, while this might be the first project the council has to consider, this is not the first or the only project in the works, as I think we all know. There are a number of projects coming in right now that are staff-level approval that aren't even going to come before us. So it's very exciting, and then I think it's a big turning point for downtown. Regarding some of the concerns we've heard about Creep and some of the comments made, I think Mr. George, you said this kind of like puts a stake in the ground. I tend to maybe agree with more of Mr. Smith. It could probably go to Waldo Street, because that's what the central Chatham subarea calls for. I think the central Chatham subarea is the stake in the ground, that along that Chatham Street corridor, we want to see the vertically-mixed, integrated uses, residential, retail, and all those cool things. And we didn't go beyond that, because we know we have such amazing, single-family residential neighborhoods that we want to protect. Now, sure, we want to make it an inviting place for people to want to come and take an older home and remodel it, or a rental home and make it homeowner, or things like that, but stay single-family home. And that's why the downtown plan, it didn't go off into the single-family neighborhoods much. So thankfully, because of the plans that we have, that, you know, was a lot of work, four years, citizen input and all that, kind of helps ensure that. So there's a lot of new stuff coming right around this intersection right here. Ms. Clark, I totally feel for you and get where you're coming. You know, there's another proposal that will be administrative approval right there on the corner of Urban and Chatham on her side of the street, you know. So it's all coming in around her really fast. So whatever I think that we, that staff or the applicant that's working on that proposal can do to help ensure that some of her concerns and others regarding buffering and things are addressed, I think will better help, you know, not only meet our downtown revitalization goals, but send the message that we do care about those that are already there and have to live with the change. Change is not easy. It is hard. Every time something happens new anywhere throughout town, people, they're scared of it. It's not easy. So I think other than that, all the comments and concerns were mentioned. I'm excited about this project. I'm excited about what's happening downtown. It's been a long time coming, and...
Ms. Robinson?
I just want to say I agree with everything that people have said. I also want to thank the applicant for doing the modeling exercise as we requested, because it really helped us understand the massing of that building and how it fit in and how the transition appears. So I feel very comfortable with it.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that the, let's see, make sure I got the right one. I move that the town council adopt the following statement regarding rezoning 17 REZ-07. The town council, the town of Cary hereby states, section one, rezoning 17 REZ-07 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Huh? Then why they put the whole thing in front of us?
To make it difficult.
So then what?
With option A.
Restart.
Make a motion to approve option A.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is that good enough, Chris?
That's fine. It's option A, motion to approve the rezoning with consistency statement.
Yeah, that.
And I'll second that.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grubbs.
Thank you.
We now move to our last discussion item 6.4. It's the 17 REZ-05 White Oak PDD rezoning. Ms. Grubbs, once again, will give the report. We're going to once again hear from Mr. Evangelista, and we may take action tonight.
Good evening again. This case is a rezoning request for about 19 acres in southwestern Cary. The subject properties are located at 1609 and 1621 White Oak Church Road, adjacent to the fairly new White Oak Elementary School. The existing White Oak Missionary Baptist Church is included in the subject parcels, and the White Oak Foundation Resource Center is under construction. This area has been changing. Both Cary and Apex have seen new residential developments over the past decade, largely in part to infrastructure improvements. And the character has really changed from historically rural to more suburban. The existing zoning for the parcels is R40 and R40 conditional use. The existing zoning condition is that the buffer adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail shall be an average width of 75 feet with a minimum width of 50 feet. The applicant proposes to change the zoning to Plan Development District Minor. The PDD zoning district allows projects of innovative design that would not otherwise be permitted because of strict application of zoning districts or general development requirements. So included in the proposed PDD are townhomes, multifamily, and office and institutional uses. So with the townhomes, it'd be a maximum of 30 units at a density of 3.58 units per acre. The applicant has also offered an affordability condition that 50% of the units would be occupied by households earning 80% of the area median income. For the multifamily, that is a maximum of 60 units with a density of 8.7 units per acre. This also has a proposed affordability condition as well as an age-restricted condition. Also with the townhomes, the applicant is offering a minimum of 2,000 square feet for community gathering space. The requirement, as per the land development ordinance, would be 1,200 square feet. The use of horizontal fiber cement siding would be the primary exterior material, and there would be no vinyl siding. And they've offered the provision of a 100-foot undisturbed buffer where their property is adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail. For the multifamily, a 150-foot building setback from the eastern property line is offered. Also, a minimum of 4,000-square-foot community gathering space. Also, for this site, it'd be a requirement of 1,200 square feet. And the applicant has offered streetscape buffers along White Oak Church Road and Ridgeback Road with two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees. For the office and institutional uses, the existing church is 11,500 square feet, and the proposed daycare would be 10,000 square feet. For the buffers and streetscape proposed in the PDD, one buffer, the cyan-colored one, between the resource center and the daycare is less than what the LDA requires, and then the American Tobacco Trail buffer is greater than what the LDA requires. For the imaginary Cary Community Plan, this request is supported by the policies in the Live, Work, Shape, and Serve chapters. As per the future growth framework map, the parcels are in the suburban neighborhood category. The site is also in the green level special planning area in the neighborhoods west of Flat Branch category. In that area, single-family housing does predominate, but other housing types may be acceptable if they're on sites of limited size and offer some special something, like affordability, age-restricted, et cetera. Community feedback with this case also happened throughout 2017, first at the neighborhood meeting, second at the town council public hearing, and third at the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing. With all the public input, we heard those in favor supported the White Oak Missionary Baptist Church current and future services to the community, and those against shared concerns about the changing character of the area, traffic, possible negative environmental impacts, and lack of services to support age-restricted housing. And I'd like to invite Mark Evangelista back up to talk about the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation.
Started with a motion to deny, went down three to five. Motion to approve, five to three. The same three voted nay both times. So I'll talk about it in terms of for the project, against the project, just to keep us straight a little bit. Main arguments for the project, two we don't see very often. First one is, many times we say, boy, why are we getting all these cases piecemeal? It'd be nice to get something big and holistic where we can take a look at the entire thing. We finally get one like that. So that was a plus. Flip that over, and there was an argument from some members of the board that in this case, a PDD is really not appropriate. It allows, bypass being a bad word, but it allows certain allowances, allows allowances, it allows certain things to happen that you wouldn't get if you did not go the PDD route. So it was looked upon as, you know, sure it's holistic, but there might be something else behind it. The second thing that we don't get to see all the time, the applicant's going to do every mitigation identified in the traffic study. Now, there weren't that many, but still, they're going to do all of them. In a place like this, where things are just getting started, we looked at that as a big plus. At the, the condition on affordable housing at 80% of the AMI, that one of our members had asked for some clarification on affordability, and to the applicant's credit, they came in and made that clarification. So that was, at that point, was something that was unfavorable for this project, but now I see they've gone ahead and straightened that out. So I'd consider that a plus. The density issues, you've heard before earlier tonight, about allowing the area-wide density as opposed to looking at the specific zoning areas. Now, with the old densities, there were considerations of well-inseptic, of course. You get services when these newer, smaller densities come in. We didn't see, the majority of us didn't see the densities being that out of line. It was within the overall framework. Granted, you're going to have pockets. That's, we'd prefer pockets and open areas and things of that nature. And in this entire sort of blank canvas that we're working with, that's a plus rather than a minus. The only other thing I want to mention, and again, this is not necessarily about the zoning as much as the process, but it was passionately presented by one of our members, so I promised I would share it. The local area residents in that part of town were, had a big part in developing the Southwest Area Plan. And they got their feedback, and it was sort of a contractual agreement between they and, between them and the town. And this Cary Community Plan kind of tossed all of that aside. And they, while they had a lot of feedback in that process, they just felt that the assurances granted in the Southwest Community Plan were not given to them. And again, I'll quote, one of our board members called this a full assault, giving nothing back. Now, they were echoing what the community had told them. And that's what we're hearing. That's what our board members who were more in contact with the people out that area heard. So there is a sentiment regarding the process, not just the rezoning. I thought I'd share that with you, just for more information as you make your decision. Any questions at all?
Questions for Mr. Evangelista?
Thank you.
Good evening.
So, staff does recommend approval of this request, because it's consistent with the imaginary Cary Community Plan policies found in the Live, Work, and Shape chapters. More housing choices are provided. There's affordable dwellings proposed that could grow a sustainable and diversifying workforce and promote high-quality education being adjacent to the school. And we do believe the applicant is providing for appropriate transition between land uses. And the request fits with the green level special planning area vision, and really helps to create and further the institutional node that has been started with the school and the church. That concludes the presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Questions, comments?
Yes, I have one question. And I'll just preface my question by saying, probably like 95% of the time, we come to the council table, and we really have our mind made up about what we're going to do on a certain case. We might discuss it, and then a person might change his or her mind. This is one of those situations where I feel so conflicted. I'm coming to the table, and I want to hear what my fellow council members have to say. With that, kind of like, yeah. Yeah. So I have to ask, because I see some major pros and cons of this project. And when we did the Southwest Area Plan, I never would have thought that an apartment complex of any kind, or any multifamily, would have been cohesive with the Southwest Area Plan. And I respect what the residents say, who say, well, the Cary Community Plan kind of threw that out, and now there's this new vision. But we still kept the whole area very low-density out there. And so that drives my question about the appropriateness of an affordable housing community that typically depends on certain infrastructure to be successful, such as a transit line.
Sure.
Or walkability to services, such as a grocery store, pharmacy, or doctor's office, that kind of thing. So I'd really like to understand how staff contemplates that problem. And, you know, I understand that we have many aspirations in our Cary Community Plan, but at some point, we have to rank those aspirations, and we have to think about the appropriateness of the use in context of what else is going to be likely built in that area. So I'd like to hear your opinion on the lack of services that support this community, and then I want to hear from my fellow council members about their thoughts, how they've assessed this.
Sure. Certainly, this area is not walkable like what we were just looking at. It's not like the Ryan Road case that we saw not too long ago. The closest services are between two and three miles away, restaurants, pharmacies, grocery stores, et cetera. In this case, we have seen the dramatic change in the area over the past decade. So these pockets of housing may come before those other pieces come in. With these pockets of housing, that could attract other things. And we do see a lot happening in Apex as well. But sure, this isn't exactly like some other cases as far as services and walkability. As far as transit goes, again, that's not close by either. I think closest line would be a couple miles away. With the age-restricted multifamily, people who are aged 60 and older qualify for the Go Cary Door-to-Door service. So that's an opportunity as well. And I know the White Oak Missionary Baptist Church provides some shuttle service, and the White Oak Resource Center, when that's built, will provide some services for the community as well.
Okay. I understand that our closest service is about 2.3 miles. What about in Apex? Are they, do they have anything closer with all the developments?
I was looking today at an aerial, trying to figure that out. And it looks like there's so much new residential development there. I didn't see anything from looking today any closer than what we have in Cary. But that, obviously, Apex is developing in a higher density than what we're developing nearby. So that could draw in services in the near future.
Okay.
Other comments?
I just wanted to piggyback on hers real quick. Are there any already planned ONI or anything that, either in Apex or in Cary, that are closer, that are already designated that might not be built?
I am not sure. I do, the best thing I have is a slide showing the development context in the area, and everything looks like it is residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to Ms. Robinson's point, I mean, you are kind of right. It's a chicken/egg thing. You know, what comes first?
thing, you know, what comes first? Do you, do you put all of the shopping, the commercial, the entertainment services and stuff in first, and then try to put the affordable housing in? Or can you get the affordable housing in, knowing that the area is growing, it's going to develop, and things are going to happen, and ultimately, those things come? If we're trying to encourage affordable housing, if, it almost, to me, makes a little more sense to get it on the front end, because the land's cheaper, it's easier to build it, than trying to go in and retrofit it after the fact, when the cost of land is so expensive, or the availability of land is scarce, or those kinds of things. So I don't have an answer, but it is, it is a chicken and egg thing.
Yeah, so that begs the question, do we have any area planned close by, may not be developed yet, but close by, that's going to be providing those support services? So that, yeah, we don't have it now, but we could capitalize on the fact that there's not a lot out there, you get inexpensive land, you can do affordable housing, and then it's, and then someday, very, sometime in the near future. I mean, it's, everything's happening so fast out here. We're not talking twenty years.
Right.
We're talking four to six, right?
I mean, my response would be, I mean, some of those things and services that people want, or, you know, especially those with lower income, some of them are here. I mean, a school, I mean, that's number one, it's key.
Daycare.
You know, the daycare is huge. The church is huge. I mean, I know-
The communities, the community-
Support services, right.
Yeah.
Now, is the shopping there? No. Is the restaurants there? No, so.
But is it in the plan nearby? I mean, how, how close?
There could be some, instead of 2.3 to 3 miles away, there could be something more in the one and a half to two-mile range.
Okay. So it's not like around the corner.
And look, there's, there's nothing planned right adjacent to it at this time.
And we're also making an assumption, and maybe this is fair, or maybe it's not, many people who need affordable housing have a car, right? They have access to this, they just can't afford to live in Cary, right? So you think about the teachers and those people, they have the ability to do it, they just can't afford to live here. So I'm not worried that grocery stores are two miles away or three miles away. I'm not worried about that. We also, for the older, age-restricted units, the fact that Go Cary can get them to where they need to go, I think that's great. But I do feel, exactly what you already said, Dawn, is that the land's going to get, the land is only going to get more expensive, right? So if we're going to do something like this, right, and we're going to support something like this, now's the time to do it. When we talk about time and space, as Mr. Evangelista said, you know, from an affordable housing perspective, to be able to have it on the west side of Cary now would be the perfect time before other development comes. And I think the rest of it will come, and I also don't think we have to worry about the fact that folks who need the affordable housing don't have a means to get somewhere.
Other comments?
No, I appreciate, like Mrs. Robinson said, wanted to hear, you know, what our colleagues are having to say, and I'm still eager to hear more. I wrote down before the meeting-
No pressure.
This is the proverbial Jack Smith 5149. I wrote that, that down here, and I don't know where the, where I stand on the 51 or the 49. This is not an ideal location for this proposal. I mean, I, it is not. But I'd be hard-pressed to know where is. I don't know. There's a lot of shortcomings. I think most of those shortcomings can be overcome in time. But I'd like to hear, hear more. I know Mr. George is chomping at the bit to say something.
Only because you were interested, what have I had to say? I, I think that to say townhomes beside a school is exactly what we debated over maybe two or three meetings by Green Hope High School, and they were replacing a farm field, and we had a hard time trying to approve townhouses there.
That was a totally different situation. Not, yeah, that's not the same. That one is like, that's completely different, but go ahead. I don't, and I don't have a problem with the townhomes. I feel totally comfortable about townhomes here. Go ahead.
So what I'm saying is, is that I think that the idea that, like, like Dawn said, the affordability, to put townhomes next to where a school is, I think is an ideal place for townhomes. I think it's exactly what you, and then to be able to put apartments or affordable places across the street as well, on a corner, not between single-family houses, not in the middle of a neighborhood, not infill development, which it just seems to me that it's a great place to start, and you have to start somewhere. And let's take this community, and it's going to be building out, it's going to be built out. Everybody, I, the car, the car comment, I agree with. I think there's probably the number of people that, if you're at eighty percent, you're probably going to have a car. It's not, maybe forty percent or fifty percent, you may not have a car, but you might not be able to qualify even to pay the rent. But I think this is a great way to be affordable in, in the area, and I think being on the corner and right across from the school gives me no issues. I may be eighty, twenty, or ninety, ten, but it's in favor.
Mr. Smith?
Well, it's funny, you know, I can't remember if we had a chance to chat or not, but, you know, we don't usually always talk about a lot of things, but on this one, when I was finished reading it, I said, huh. I was arguing with myself, and I kept losing, I guess, I don't know, winning, but, so I started calling some of you, which is rare, but, and I found that we're all struggling with, you know, some of the things. The other thing that I found unusual is the intensity and of some of the emails I received, and the absolute, like, passion on the minutia in the details. I mean, the whole idea of the community plan is, is that we look at the big picture and we look at things, and it was like I'm reading all these arguments that this doesn't fit, and I had, I thought there was equal arguments that it does fit. And I, I couldn't understand the passion, so it was interesting to hear the comment about years ago, in the Southwest Area Plan, and the involvement of those folks. Now I understand, now I understand, you know, this like feeling of violation or feeling that, you know, we've dismissed that. But, you know, in fairness, if those people back then were that passionate, if they recall our conversations, there were a lot of intense conversations on approving that plan. And the argument, and it's in the minutes and the records that I argued, was we're kidding ourselves if things are going to go slow and calm and have this order. Remember, you and I talked about, you know, the acre lots and the next, and I remember saying to you one or two times that it's going to, it's going to leapfrog, it's going to come. I mean, the county is growing a hundred people a day. We, I don't know what our number is by day. Now you have the potential of sixty thousand people outside of Pittsboro in a very short time, as we look at those massive developments. So, cutting through it all, I looked at this, and I just said, what's right for Cary? What's, what's right for the community? We are a culturally diverse, we are a welcoming community, and I like the fact that we could have something where it's affordable and can be built now, and I believe all those other challenges, we're going to be able to heal. I, I just do. I think they're going to happen, because people are going to grow out there, and if folks that felt that we've left them down on the Southwest Plan, look around, you're already, we're talking tonight about Apex. You got the other side with, with Pittsboro. We're going to keep doing it in an orderly manner, and in the end, I, I gave up, you know, I like to talk about the percentage, but on this one, in my heart, we have a commitment to affordable housing. I think it's a, a real testament that somebody wants to step up and do something, and frankly, that was the decision for me. You know, we have all that other detail, but I will say, I'm voting, you know, maybe I'm not voting by my head, but I'm definitely voting for my, by my heart, and I think this is right for Cary, and I think this is a good place for it.
You're so compelling. You know, I, I would, I really appreciate everybody's input. It's very helpful to hear it. You know, one thing I would say is that as we look forward and we see this changing landscape in Western Cary, we really need to figure out a way to get transit out there. I think we're in a very fortunate position to have an on-demand system for our senior population, but as we see things change in Western Cary, we need to be more proactive than we've been with transit out there. We have senior communities out there that already need it, and really shouldn't have to rely just on the demand, on-demand system, although it's pretty premier. But, I mean, I think we'd be well-served to get transit out there.
We talked about that at the last retreat, and we were waiting for the transit to pass, right? And then we were going to revisit everything west of 55, I remember.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need to revisit. To a point you raised before, there's probably some merit in having a board that helps us consider transportation and transit and cycling and pedestrian types of things. Yeah, that's a glorious idea. So I'm just affirming it. On that note, I will make a motion to approve 17 REZ 05.
A second. There's a motion and a second, two seconds. Further discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Grubbs.
Can we just clarify, Ms. Robinson, that you meant approve it in accordance with the motion that was in front of you?
Yes, absolutely, in accordance with that motion.
And Mr. Smith, is that your understanding?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, that concludes the discussion items. We're ready to go into closed session. I would entertain a motion.
Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A, 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuits, the City of Fayetteville and Public Works Commission of the City of Fayetteville versus the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission at All, the estate of John Burl Hudson versus Norfolk Southern Railway Company at All, and I think it's the estate of Dorothy Louise Flint versus Norfolk Southern Railway Company at All, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143, 318, 10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. We're in closed session.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. We have no other business. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion's unanimous.
They twisted them all.
We are adjourned. Thank you.